Okay. I just like doing that.
Important.
Yeah. I'd like to call a meeting to adjourn. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks for coming, everybody. Everyone knows what they call it, the super moon that we have?
Mm-hmm.
It's been pretty cold. The weather's been nice, but it's supposed to turn colder like tomorrow, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think so. Tomorrow afternoon, we're gonna get cold. Roll call, please.
Sandy Kufal.
Absent excuse.
Crystal Regan.
Here.
Kristy Hilton.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here. Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Okay. I'd like to amend the agenda. I'd like, under six, under new business, it'd be hall use for the Boy Scouts, and under seven, approved bids for asbestos removal.
Support.
Okay, motion support. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor of the amended agenda? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have bills payable. Entertaining a motion, pay the bills.
Okay. Go ahead.
Make a motion. Bills payable, forty-seven thousand eight hundred and seven dollars and seventy-six cents.
Support.
Okay, motion is support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Kristy Hilton, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Excuse me, Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have public comments. Do we have any public comments tonight? Please state your name and address, sir.
Why do you want my address?
Because. We know where to send the hate mail.
All right. Good evening. Bill Greitup at 9200 North River Road, Clay Township, north of Elginak, by the state park. I'm also your county commissioner for the area. I just wanted to take a second to wish everybody a happy holiday season. It seems to me that things have been very, very good this year. Clay Township seems to be running nice and smooth. I've heard no complaints from anybody. I know the police department is busy, but they like that. George has got the fire department under control. I was talking to John Backter. The water department's flowing just beautifully. Everything, everything seems to be great, and I commend you guys on the, on the great job that you seem to be doing this year. So, if I don't get to your next meeting, that's why I figured I'd come a little bit early and get my, my holiday wishes in. And as always, any questions or problems, get in touch with me.
All right? Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Great talk. Thank you, Bill. Any other public comments? Seeing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Entertaining a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of November 20th, and synopsis, check reports. There is communication, which is an ATF referral, the wastewater treatment plant agenda and history.
Support.
Okay, motion support. Does anyone have any questions or anything?
Yes, I have a couple things that, that last long meeting we had, Cindy was working hard to keep up on things, so, but there was a couple of things I'd like to, on page two of the minutes of that meeting, motion five. The motion was made by Shirkey, not Bryson, because Cindy, you supported it. You were writing feverishly. We had so many items.
I'm moving quick.
And then, I would like it, just to be matter of public record, that amend the, I guess, under the requests, that Mark and I will be attending a workshop meeting up at, with the MTA on our, on Policy Manual. Maybe we'll find out something new. And I put, I think the price would be two-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. Just so, for, you know, public information, staying transparent here. It's on the fourteenth, we'll be going on next week. And that's all.
All right.
So you want to amend your consent agenda and include the Policy Matters training?
Mm-hmm, and fix the minutes.
Okay. All right, anything else on a consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving right into the supervisor's report. I just wanted to let the board know, we've been working on upgrading the water main that goes down the Colony Road, and petitions are, it's gonna be funded by a special assessment for the Colony, and petitions are out and they're being circulated. And I'm pretty confident that, you know, they're, they have a lot of support for this special assessment. And I know John DeBoyer and myself and Barb, we've been, put a lot of work on this, and so has project control and the engineering, the costs and the bonding for the project. Total is gonna be about a one-point-two-million-dollar project, and it'll be spread out through a special assessment for the property owners over twenty years. And if it gets signed, and we'll, they'll be bringing it to our board soon, and once we approve it for the bonding and for the project, we'll put it out for bid with hopefully shovels in the ground, you know, maybe in May. And I know the DEQ is, wants it to happen very bad, and their water main that serves that road is ninety years old, and, you know, this will also give them fire hydrants on the road, and it'll be a big improvement for the water on Colony Drive, so. And it's only gonna affect, you know, it's a special assessment for Colony Drive, so I wanna make that clear, too. Kristy finished all the EVIP, uh, reporting. What's EVIP stand for? Economic?
Well, they changed it to CBTR.
Yes, they changed it. It's not EVIP.
City-Village-Township Revenue Sharing.
Right. And...
Say that again.
City-Village-Township Revenue Sharing.
Right. And it's a lot of work, and we got it in. And so, we'll get our money from the state. Had a couple meetings with the Firefighters Union, the MAFF, kinda a little disappointed. We had one scheduled today, and they did not show up for it. I was optimistically hopeful we would have a tentative agreement today, but that didn't happen, so we're looking to reschedule and see if we have more information. We have to go on that. We will be having our auditors give us a report our next board meeting. We did have a preliminary meeting with them today, and everything looks pretty good, but they'll be here our next meeting to tell you that in person. Now, we have a, a meeting coming up this next week with County, St. Clair County Road Commission, Elginak IRA, to review our water, wastewater treatment plan, plant budget. Basically, it's, the bottom line is the same as it has been the last two years, so it's staying flat. They're allocating a little bit more money here, a little less there, and we have new people in Elginak, so we're gonna have to bring them up to speed on how this plan operates, and, and we're in the middle of a couple projects on that, too. I've been working pretty hard with the DNR trust fund grant for the proposed kayak access site on Harson's Island, and we have two public meetings scheduled, as you are aware. The first one's gonna be before our meeting here, December 18th, at seven o'clock, and then our second meeting in January 22nd on the island, 2018. We're gonna have a public meeting over there about the project. We're only required to have one, but I'm gonna have two, one on each side of the river. It's gonna, I myself, I personally think it's a good plan. We're going to basically, after we get the grants, we're gonna be purchasing about nine acres of property along the Crispin Blue Way Trail, and after we get our grants and the management of the county, it's gonna cost the township about fourteen thousand dollars for nine acres of property. That's not bad in my book.
That's a good deal.
And we do have a, a concept drawing, but we are gonna have some modifications, I'm sure. In fact, there it is over there. If anyone has any questions on it, feel free to ask me. And we did find out, one step is, I thought we were gonna have to do is modify our current parks and rec plan, and I was in talks with the grant facilitators, with the DNR, and they said, actually, our, our current parks and rec plan is satisfactory, 'cause we did specify in there that we are looking for kayak access sites and, and property for access to the water, and they said that was sufficient. So, I let the planners know that we don't have to amend the, the current parks and rec plan, so that's time and cost savings. Been working on various building issues and some dangerous buildings with trustee Chris O'Regan, and we got some, some, some bids going out, and there's gonna be others soon. I think we got about three on Acro Bay Drive we gotta...
Yes, sir.
Hit pretty soon. And I know we have probably about ten in the, I say, in the can, that Sid's gonna be sending letters to our building inspector and say either they have to get a building permit to, you know, update these with a plan, or we're gonna start taking action on them. Upcoming events, we have Pearl Beach Lions is having their Christmas tree, or their Chris, children's Christmas party at the Pearl Beach Lions Hall. Again, that's December 17th at their hall. The doors open at noon, and Santa arrives, I hear, at one, and they have free gifts for all the kids. We are starting another consumer education series, and that's put on through the Attorney General's office, and the first one starts here, Thursday, January 4th, at seven o'clock. And that one is phone, phone mail and e-s scams. They have, I know we did this, well, we did it this fall on Harson's Island, we did it last winter here, but they're saying that we have a lot more information, it's up to date, so they want to come out and, and do it again. We do have our Red Wings bus trip planned for Friday, January 5th. We get on the bus, leaves here at the park next door at five o'clock sharp, and we go to Little Caesar's Arena and watch the Red Wings beat the Florida Panthers. I believe it sold out, though, right? Cost was seventy-eight dollars a head?
Did not take long.
Right. Wednesday, this coming Wednesday in a couple days, the Elginak, City of Elginak's having their Christmas parade and tree lighting. Tree lighting is at five. I'm not sure if the parade's before or after. I was trying to get that information right. What, six? The parade's at six. So, Wednesday, the parade's at six in Elginak, so that's always a nice parade, so.
This Wednesday.
Yeah. Coming up, they get the old tractors and are with all their lights on and stuff, it's pretty nice, so. And, let's see, December 10th, Harson's Island, we do have a CPR class at one o'clock at the Harson's Island Fire Station. I know we had some requests. We probably got about six or seven people already going, and I think what we're gonna have to do is line some, I'd like to see a CPR class every two months, myself. We're getting a lot of interest on it, and let me tell you, if there's one thing that can save lives in our community, is people knowing how to give CPR, as we will find out later. And that's all I have on the report. So, moving right ahead, we have a, a report for the fire chief. George?
Good evening. I attended one meeting in the month of November that was the St. Clair County Chiefs Association. Topic was, of discussion was a Mavis Committee. They were planning on doing a drill at the north end of the county sometime in the future. Once they do theirs, then they're gonna have one for us down on the south end. The other thing I would like to, is I would like to thank the men and women of our emergency service section for an outstanding job and going above the call of duty. The fire department responded to a call regarding a five-year-old child not breathing with CPR in progress. I would like to thank dispatcher Beverly Rose, Captain Bailey, firefighter John Suzinski, Sergeant Hubert, firefighter Martha Walsh, and firefighter Ben Conroy for an outstanding job for that call that they went on.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, that's the first time we got applause for your report. Thanks a lot, George. We don't have a unfinished business. Under new business, please, we have employee recognition for Beverly Rose, I think. Chief, you got something?
Yep. I touched a little further on what Chief Rose was talking about there. Same call and question, and it was brought to my attention by Officer Brian Dahl from our department, who witnessed this and, and told me what an outstanding job that was done. I'll just kinda read to you, you know, what I had written here for the board, but, so I'd like to bring to, the following to the board's attention. November 23rd, 2017, I was advised by officers from our department about an outstanding job done by dispatcher Beverly Rose. Dispatcher Rose received a 911 call from a frantic mother attending to her five-year-old son who was not breathing. Without hesitation, dispatcher Rose began instructing the caller on how to perform CPR as well as getting medical responders en route. When she received the 911 call, it was obvious that the caller was very distraught. Beverly Rose took command of the call and reassured the caller that she could get this done. Dispatcher Rose kept the caller focused on CPR in progress until medical responders arrived on scene. I'd like to command, or commend dispatcher Rose for her job well done. Can't say enough about her dedication for her job as well as our community. And listening to this, it just shows the, the quality of a dispatcher that we have there, and I will say throughout our department, and what a job that was, just very, very well done, and how she took somebody who's obviously one of the most emotional, you know, things that could happen in your life, and kept her focused on the job at hand, and Bev did a wonderful job. So, with that being said, Bev?
Come up front real quick, please. And I would like to present you with this commendation award.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bev. Very good, Bev.
You gotta, you gotta smile. Great job.
Yeah.
You a wide angle?
I gotta tell ya, I heard that 911 call, and it was like, it was incredible. I was in more suspense listening to that than any, any action movie I've seen in past ten years.
It's a joint effort.
Right.
Brian Dahl stood in the back to answer any other incoming phones coming in. Our department got there very quickly, handled everything really quickly, trihospital transport. It's truly a joint effort.
Right.
There's not one person.
It was, you did an incredible job.
Absolutely.
So. All right. Next on the agenda, we have a Motorola service agreement for just under five thousand dollars.
Did it to me again?
Yeah, I asked you again. Why don't you give a brief synopsis?
Well, real quick on this. What had happened is, in the past, our service agreement was always through Comsource, which is a outsourcing vendor for Motorola themselves. And since Motorola now has taken this outsourcing and done away with it. So now, any kind of service agreement or service contract now has to be through Motorola itself. They revamped everything across the board, which obviously, our prices went up, with that being said. I went back and forth with them for about two weeks, to the point where I knew I wasn't getting any further. I had pretty much gotten as far as I can with trying to reduce the cost. As you can see, that's what I was able to get it down to. Obviously, it's something that, you know, I was quite surprised, but with Motorola, it doesn't surprise me.
No.
The problem that we got there is, there's no one else you can go to. They pretty much, they have the market cornered on this as far as the dispatch end of it goes, and they control everything as far as any kind of service that's gonna be done on it. So, basically, they, they've, they've got us, you know, over the barrel on this one. What the future holds, I don't know, but it's something that we will obviously keep, keep a finger on the pulse and see if anything changes with that in the future. But for right now, it's kinda, obviously, it's detrimental to our infrastructure that we make sure that we're covered. Equipment is quite costly, if, if there was any kind of, any kind of catastrophic failure with it, but...
And this covers a little more than the old one do, 'cause it does cover parts, too.
Yes, yes. It covers, yeah. With this one, it pretty much covers all parts.
Right.
Covers all parts, all labor. With our old contract, it didn't, because we were at that point, end of life, with that dispatch council, so actually trying to find parts wouldn't be very easy, which is why we ended up putting the new dispatch council in to begin with. But it's, it's kinda tough, because pretty much any of the services out there Motorola has bought up. I talked to Ken Cummings from TriHospital, who told me the same thing happened with him up there. Luckily, I was able to get a little more headway, getting us a better cost on it. I think I whined and cried enough that they, they just, finally, they got sick of hearing from me, so they did us a little bit better, but we'll see what we can do to keep going from here. But unfortunately, this is one of those necessary evils that we have to deal with for now, so.
Yeah, Mike, I, I talked to you a little bit about this before, but Motorola was the initial installer of this dispatch?
Technically, it is Comsource who is a, they are a subcontractor for Motorola. Motorola has their project managers involved in this, who basically orchestrate the projects. Then from there, it's outsourced to Comsource. They do anything as far as the hardware and installs like that. As far as the software end of it and the program end of it and that, that is all done through the state of Michigan. So Motorola, pretty much what they do is they, they orchestrate the whole thing and they manage the project itself. But at the end of the day, it's basically, it's whatever Motorola says.
Well, during, during the initial bid process for Motorola and concert to make construction, was there anything applied about a purchase agreement or a maintenance agreement at that point in time, service agreement?
Well, as far as that goes, no. I mean, we could go without one. But the, the problem is, it's not something, I mean, you just can't, because if you did have any kind of cash flow or failure...
Right.
Now we're at their beck and call, you know? I mean, there's nothing that says we have to have it. So, the only thing that they give you as far as anything within agreement is like most things, what their warranty period is, and that's what we've come up, our one year of the warranty period.
Well, I guess my point was that there's anything verbally that was told by Motorola and them to you about a, a service agreement being lesser than what it is now, then...
No. Actually, when we were doing budgets this year, I could not get a definitive answer on this, as far as what it was. So, myself and Supervisor Bryson, we figured, okay, well, let's pad this a little bit and let's, let's bump it up about twenty percent, just in case, because we do have the new council and that, so that's what we did, anticipate, and, you know, we'd have a little, we'd have a little bit of an increase with it. Then come to find out afterwards, one of the reasons I couldn't get any information on it is because we were, they were right in the middle of making these changes. From what I'm told is somebody had retired from Comsource, who was a guy that basically worked with this and worked with Motorola, once he retired, everything went out the window from there. Like I say, I'm sure everybody got hit the same way. I know, like I say, here within the county, I'm not talked, I have not talked to Central Dispatch C, where they sit with it, but I know Ken Cummings from TriHospital said, they actually, they got hit even harder than us.
Yeah. I apologize, Mike. Did you say this covers both of the councils?
Yes, this covers everything. This covers everything, right from our, anything that, everything that the state themselves do not cover, like now, as far as our tower goes, most of the infrastructure on a tower, that is covered by the state and through the state agreement, and that comes through our 911 agreements and 911 funds and things of that nature. So, anything like that, state would cover, but anything beyond that, having to do with our councils, our councillets, our, our state dispatch stations themselves, that will be covered under this maintenance agreement.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Motorola service agreement for four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and ninety-two cents, out of line number two-zero-seven-point-zero-zero-point-nine-three-two-point-zero-zero.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? How we doing on the second seat? We're almost there, right? We're just waiting for the state?
Almost there. I got an email the other day, they're expecting, right after the first of the year, they're basically trying to pin the state down, and that's where we sit right now, is waiting on the state to come in, finish the software end of it and the program end of it, and, and get it up and running on the, on the state server, so, once that's done, we're rolling. Everything's ready to go.
Sounds good. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have a question to elevate Shawn Hopkins to full-time status in our police department.
And with this one, I think you see there, Shawn's been with us now since, yeah, four and a half years now, 2013. Shawn came in originally as working one of our auto township cars. Shawn, you know, senses, is really become part of the family, there's no doubt about it. I'm sure everybody here knows by now. Shawn is a very valuable at the end of accident investigator. He is a accident reconstructionist, as well as an expert witness in the field, and among many other things, he's been helping me a lot as far as vehicle maintenance and that goes, too. He's pretty handy with that stuff as well. Shawn's gonna be filling the one void that we have right now for the, the full-time position, so now it's trying to see if we can keep up on our part-time people. It's kinda tough right now, filling slots for any kind of positions for police officers right now, so having somebody like Shawn on board is definitely a plus for us. Shawn, twenty-five years with the city of Roseville, there's not much that he hasn't seen and done, so, although some of the things out here catch him from, by surprise, so, which I think it does all of us, but, yeah. Shawn's gonna definitely, we wanna see him stick around for quite a few more years to come. He's got, he's got a lot more years under his belt, so.
I say, he doesn't look that old.
No, no, he'd be okay. He looks pretty good for seventy.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, I'm seventy-one.
You look good, too, Mark.
Thank you, okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we elevate Officer Shawn Hopkins to full-time status, effective immediately.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion or any questions for Shawn while we got him here? I just wanna say, I'm growing to know him, and he's a great guy, and I'm, I'm happy that we're, we're doing this, so.
Well, I thought he's been on the force a lot longer than four and a half years, 'cause I see him everywhere, you know, so.
How you making out on the island? Have you found your way around okay?
I'm learning.
Tricky.
Since I retired, I didn't have too much island experience, but I'm trying to learn the different streets and earn my way around the different areas.
It's tricky. Welcome.
Okay, all in favor of elevating Officer Shawn, Shawn Hopkins to full-time? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Shawn. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Good job, good job, Shawn.
If you get lost, just call me.
Thank you.
Where's Schnickenberger?
Congratulations.
Nervancy?
Yeah.
Saint Antoine?
Yeah.
Oh, boy. We got a few of them there.
Ames.
Yeah, Ames.
Baltimore Highway. All right. We have a before's resolution, 2017-37. Moonsoo, moons...
Mansoon.
Mansoon.
Excellent.
Coffee Company, small winemaker license and small distillery license. How we doing?
Doing well. How are you?
Good. Michael, right? Coffee Company, small winemaker license and small distillery license. How we doing?
Doing well. How are you?
Good. Michael, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thanks for having me back.
Oh, yes, no problem. So we do have all the paperwork, right?
Yes, sir.
Before us, and everyone, as you see, signed all the department heads signed off on it? And what's, what's the name of your, I mean, it doesn't really matter, I'm just curious. What's the name of the company you're going to be, is you're going to be operating their Monsoon?
No, we're going to do a DBA, you know, Harson's Island Distillery.
Okay, good. Good. Everything else going good for you?
It's going good, yeah.
All right.
Are, are you scheduled to meet with the planning commission yet?
I haven't scheduled it yet. Waiting to...
I'm curious, yeah.
Yeah, you're in the first step.
This is the first step.
I will make a motion to approve resolution 2017-37 for the Monsoon Coffee Company to apply for the following license, small winemaker license and small distiller license.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion on this or questions?
Can't wait.
Hearing none. We gotta vote first. Roll call vote.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes. Thank you much.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and we'll get...
Step one. You have my fingerprints. And that was voluntary, by the way.
We'll probably, oh, you get, we got it right now?
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you and have a nice holiday.
You're very welcome.
I look forward to seeing you at the grand opening.
Sounds good. Yeah.
That piece of paper commits you to the rest of the meeting.
Well, he was at the end.
Yeah. Okay, we have a...
Just kidding.
Resolution 2017-38 is to opt out of Public Act 152, the Publicly Funded Healthcare Insurance Contribution Act. We have to do this every year, and if we don't, we'd actually be violating about five labor contracts that we have. Public Act, it's a act requiring public employees to pay at least 20% of the healthcare premiums. By opting out of it, we, they do pay, but not the 20%. And this was a negotiated thing in all the contracts, so we gotta, before I use the resolution to opt out of that.
I'd like to make a motion to support the resolution 2017-38 to opt out of Public Act 152.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next is, under the amended agenda, is Hall Use, the Boy Scouts. They're looking for a place to hold their meetings, and they got ahold of me this morning. They're looking, they're going to be meeting Fridays from 6 o'clock PM to roughly 8:30. Sometimes they'll, they'll just meet here and then go leave someplace else. Sometimes they'll have a regular meeting. It's going to be the first and third Fridays of the month, and our hall is, is empty then. No, there's no use. And I just wanted to get the boards okay. I think it's a good thing that we've been working pretty close with the Boy Scouts and the Cub Scouts. You know, we helped them out with a couple Eagle projects. We've got another one cooking going forward. The Cub Scouts just planted some trees here, and they always do plant flowers in their, in our flower boxes and everything. And I even extended to them if they need to hang some banners or something in the walls and stuff, they're more than welcome to, so. I just wanted to bring it before the board to allow them the use of the Township Hall on the first and third Fridays, 6 to 8:30.
Is that a motion?
I'll move that we allow the Boy Scouts to use of the Township Hall, first and third Fridays from 6 to 8:30.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion?
Hey, Artie, is this the same scout troop that came in?
Yes.
For the Q and A and the board members?
Yes.
Same leadership, same?
Yep.
Okay.
Same leadership. I think we have a couple officers that have scouts in it, don't we?
They have met at ER a hall a couple times.
Right.
We didn't have anywhere. And I was talking to Tim, and if something happens at the Township, does have something going on, we can always work between us to figure something out.
Yeah. More, we'll, we'll be open most of the, I can't foresee much. I know they've been meeting at a couple other places, and it hasn't been working out, so they're looking for a home, and I can't think of a better place for it to be than here. Any more discussion on that? We do have motion and support, right?
Yep.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So I'll let them know tomorrow. And next we have, I've been trying to, for asbestos removal on the 5244 Point Tremble Drive, we bought it, and we wanted to tear the house down. The siding on it has asbestos shingles, 9%. And it's, it's been difficult to find, and Chris has even been helping me, finding people to give quotes on the, on the removal of these. I've actually been talking to the folks at the landfill and maybe doing it ourselves, and that's not a real good idea. There's a lot of, a lot of hoops you gotta jump through. I do have two quotes. One that I had for a little while, I thought was way too high, from Tech Environmental, as you can see, and I just received another quote from Blue Moon Abatement for the amount of $6,500, and they are, well, they're from the county, I think they're in Marysville. And I'm expecting, I've also contacted another local company, S.A. Terrello, and I'm expecting a quote either in about two days. And I'd like to get the board's permission is to, you know, allow me to approve the $6,500 quote if the Terrello quote is not cheaper. So if you can give me the flexibility of, of, you know, of getting asbestos siding removed at a cost not more than $6,500, I don't want to have to wait, because, you know, I like to do it before the snow flies, that's for sure, hard, so. Like to get moving on as fast as we can, so. Both these companies are, are licensed and insured, and they're certified abatement companies, so.
So the asbestos is just concentrated to the siding?
Yeah, that's all, that's all it is. We had inspected, and there isn't any more asbestos in, in the building. The, the amount on the siding is, is 9%, which is above the threshold that it has to be taken off properly. It has to be double-bagged, and it goes to the same landfill, but part of it, you know, gets double-bagged and taken, taken up there, so. And then they actually have a bunch of paperwork they have to do for the landfill, so. And before we do demo the car, the house, I know I was talking to both police and the fire chiefs about doing some training in there for both of them and have a little fun in there.
After they take the asbestos siding off?
Yeah, yeah. Maybe they can go find a supervisor.
So if we're doing this because it's a township property, what about the other homes in the township that has asbestos on it, and they decide to tear it down and build again?
Well, they're not supposed to. They're, I mean, it's, it's up to the property owner and the contractors.
So why don't we get one of those contractors?
Because they're not licensed.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for the supervisor to enter an agreement for asbestos removal for 5244 Point Tremble in an amount not to exceed $6,500.
Support.
Okay, a motion to sport and support. On the discussion, if we go with Blue Moon, I'll have to, we'll have to cut a check for $2,500 right away, and then the, the balance after the job's completed, so just want to let the board know that. Have motion and support. Any more discussion?
No.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, board member comments. I was going to start with Sandy, but she's not here. Chris, you have anything?
I would like to congratulate Officer Hopkins and dispatcher Beverly Rose for doing an outstanding job and making the township very proud of you and the departments, departments. Thank you to all assisted with the firefighters and their staff, and remind everybody, it's the holiday season, so you have about a month to do something nice for somebody. Try and make it happen.
Three weeks.
That's it.
Chrissy?
I would agree with everything Chris just said.
Okay. How we doing down there, Mark?
Good. Yeah, I agree with what Chris said as far as the service, our service associates are doing, especially the police department, the fire department as well. I also would like to thank this time to, or at least thank Mike, our chief coach. No matter what questions I throw at him out here, he's got the answers right on, point on, so I don't know how he keeps it all together, but I'm glad he's on our team, I really am. On that note, I'd like to have some kind of an update on the firefighters' training that we've had, and I know we've appointed some of the firefighters here recently that are required to do some other specific educational back, or at least educational development prior to becoming firefighter one, firefighter two. So maybe on the next meeting, we can have an update on that, Chief. Possible? Thank you.
I only have one that needs firefighter one, firefighter two, and that's Donovan Hubert.
Okay.
And he's scheduled to go to class in January. I ordered, in fact, I got his books for his class today.
And wasn't there one that was going to hire full-time and needed some other educational development?
That was, no.
GED or something like that?
I believe that was firefighter DuPage when we brought him onto the safer...
Who was it?
Firefighter DuPage.
Yeah.
We brought him onto the safer grant.
Yeah. If I can get an update on all of that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I will just add a little bit to, kudos for our first responders, and indeed, Bev, as a dispatcher, is a very first responder, because she starts all the wheels in motion to get all the people on board, and as a citizen of Clay Township, and also a Clay board member, I'd like to just express my deep gratitude for what you do for our community. You're certainly a role model for dispatchers with all your 25 years of experience. So we're blessed to have you as a member of the dispatch unit.
She's not that old.
I didn't say she's that old. I said she's got 25 years' experience. She started when she was 10, didn't you know that?
That's right.
This is blonde coming in. This is all right.
That's it. All right. Well, in agreement with the rest of the board, I wanted to thank all of our first responders as well, everyone that took a part in that call. You don't ever want to hear calls of that nature, but it's nice to see that we have a good team working together when we do. And congratulations, Shawn.
Congratulations, Shawn. Bev and all the firefighters that took on that call. Like what they used to say, what was the old TV show, The A-Team? I love it when the plan comes together.
Sergeant Murdock.
Yeah, Sergeant Murdock. That's pretty much it, you know? Everyone was spot on, so that's great, and kudos to everybody. Chris said, too, it is the holiday season, and so don't forget to hug your family, and, you know, when you're out there Christmas shopping, don't be in such a hurry. Enjoy it. Better order online. So, that being said...
Motion to adjourn.
Support. Okay, all right, thanks for coming. All in favor, ayes.
Aye.
Drive safe.